In my attention, the Les Letourne Guahan is called to order. I recognize the majority leader, Senator Esposito.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and good afternoon. Madam Speaker, we are in the voting file and prepared to vote on all of these bills and the override. And I want to just recognize the clerk and the legal counsel and her staff for making sure that we're able to do this now. At this time, at the request of the sponsor of Bill 424-30, I make it not withstanding the House rules motion that we pull this out of the voting file and refer this bill back to the Committee on Education. And this is substituted by the Committee on Education, and it's relative to the reorganization of the Guam Education Policy Board.
On that motion, then, to refer Bill 424 back to the Committee on Education without any objections, so ordered.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Okay, we are on the voting file. But before we proceed, I'd just like to thank our colleagues, you know, for your support as well of the clerical staff and legal counsel as they proofread, edit, and engross the bills. I'd like to thank the senators as well, who sent staff over, and really appreciate your assistance. The vice speaker, Senator Esposito, Senator Palacios for sending, Senator Ada also for sending a staffer over, Senator Barnes. Thank you very much for your assistance. So we are now in Bill Number 100-30 COR.
Bill Number 100-30 COR is substituted by the Committee on Appropriations, Taxation, Banking, Insurance, Retirement, and Land, and amended on the floor. Introduced by F. B. Ogden Jr., V. J. V. Espaldon, V. C. Panglinen. An act relative to reaffirming the judiciary of Guam as a separate and equal branch of the government of Guam through ensuring the proper and timely disbursement of cash lot mints necessary for the administration of justice in the courts as provided in the annual appropriations made by Les Letourne Guahan to the judiciary of Guam.
Roll call. Senator Ada? Senator V. A. Ada?
Yes.
Senator Ogden?
Yes.
Senator Blas?
Yes.
Senator Cavill?
Yes.
Senator Cruz?
Aye.
Senator Espaldon?
Yes.
Senator Guthardts?
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes?
Aye.
Senator Palacios?
Aye.
Senator Panglinen?
Aye.
Senator Esposito?
Aye.
Senator Titegri?
Aye.
Senator Tenorio?
Aye.
Substitute Bill Number 100-30 COR received 15 yeas, which this bill is unanimously passed by this body.
Bill Number 159-30 COR?
Bill Number 159-30 COR as amended on the floor. Introduced by B. J. F. Cruz, Judithy Wampat, E. D. D., F. B. Ogden Jr. An act to add a new chapter in 98 to Title 10 Guam Code Annotated relative to prohibiting the importation and sale of ingestible tobacco film strips, ingestible tobacco sticks, tobacco heart candies, nicotine lollipops, nicotine lip balm, and nicotine water.
Roll call. Senator Ada?
Yes.
Senator V. A. Ada?
Yes.
Senator Ogden?
Aye.
Senator Blas?
Yes.
Senator Cavill?
Aye.
Yes.
Senator Cruz?
Aye.
Senator Espaldon?
Yes.
Senator Guthardts?
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes?
Aye.
Senator Palacios?
Aye.
Senator Panglinen?
Aye.
Senator Esposito?
Yes.
Senator Titegri?
Yes.
Senator Tenorio?
Aye.
Speaker Wampat?
Bill Number 159-30 COR received 15 votes. Bill Number 159-30 is unanimously passed by this body. Bill Number 278-30?
Bill Number 278-30 LS is substituted by the Committee on Appropriations, Taxation, Banking, Insurance, Retirement, and Land, and amended on the floor. Introduced by Committee on Appropriations, Taxation, Banking, Insurance, Retirement, and Land as submitted by Maga Laing Guahan pursuant to public law 30-06. An act to authorize the ancestral lands commission to extinguish claims of original landowners of Tejon properties transferred to the AB Wampat International Airport Authority by the United States of America by a land exchange of properties identified pursuant to public law 30-06.
Roll call. Senator Ada?
Yes.
Senator V. A. Ada?
Yes.
Senator Ogden?
Aye.
Senator Blas?
Madam Speaker, I ask the indulgents of the body to recuse me from the voting of this measure. I, on the conflict of interest, I have family members or a family interest in this legislation.
I present to the body, should the body then excuse Senator Frank Blas Jr. from voting. Are there any objections? No objections, so ordered.
Senator Cavill?
Aye.
Senator Cruz?
Aye.
Senator Espaldon?
Yes.
Senator Guthardts?
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes?
Aye.
Senator Palacios?
Aye.
Senator Panglinen?
Aye.
Senator Esposito?
Aye.
Senator Titegri?
Yes.
Senator Tenorio?
Aye.
Substitute Bill Number 278-30 LS received 14 yeas votes, one excuse. Substitute Bill Number 278-30 is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 238-30.
Bill Number 238-30 COR as amended on the floor. Introduced by V. C. Panglinen, Judithy Wampat, E. D. D. An act to add a new section 3133 to Article 1 of Chapter 3 of Title 17 Guam Code Annotated relative to the creation of the Department of Education Financial Supervisory Commission and to amend section 3112 of Article 1 of Chapter 3 of Title 17 Guam Code Annotated.
Roll call. Senator Ada?
Yes.
Senator V. A. Ada?
Yes.
Senator Ogden?
Aye.
Senator Blas?
Yes.
Senator Cavill?
Aye.
Senator Cruz?
Aye.
Senator Espaldon?
Yes.
Senator Guthardts?
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes?
Aye.
Senator Palacios?
Aye.
Senator Panglinen?
Aye.
Senator Esposito?
Aye.
Senator Titegri?
Yes.
Senator Tenorio?
Aye.
Speaker Wampat?
Bill Number 238-30 received 15 yeas votes. Bill Number 238 is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 303-30.
Bill Number 303-30 COR is substituted by the Committee on Appropriations, Taxation, Banking, Insurance, Retirement, and Land, and amended on the floor. Introduced by Telotiteri, T. Ciada, F. F. Blas Jr., V. C. Panglinen, Thier Munia Barnes. An act to add a new Article 10 to Chapter 51 of Title 10 Guam Code Annotated relative to recognizing the villages of Inorahin and Ordo as the host community for accommodating the solid waste disposal needs of the entire island of Guam resulting from the operation of the Legion landfill and the Ordo dump in their backyards.
Roll call. Senator Ada?
Yes.
Senator V. A. Ada?
Yes.
Senator Ogden?
Aye.
Senator Blas?
Yes.
Senator Cavill?
Aye.
Senator Cruz?
Aye.
Senator Espaldon?
Yes.
Senator Guthardts?
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes?
Aye.
Senator Palacios?
Aye.
Senator Panglinen?
Aye.
Senator Esposito?
Aye.
Senator Titegri?
Yes.
Senator Tenorio?
Aye.
Speaker Wampat.
I have filed with the clerk's office a possible conflict of interest because I live in the village of Malolu, but I will vote after declaration of my, of that possibility is to vote yes. Substitute Bill Number 303-303-30 received 15 yeas. Substitute Bill Number 303-30 is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 338-30.
Bill Number 338-30 COR as amended on the floor. Introduced by Thier Munia Barnes, T. Ciada, V. C. Panglinen. An act to amend section 7120.3b of Chapter 7 Title 16 Guam Code Annotated relative to the inclusion of widows and widowers in the eligibility for issuance of special go star license plates.
Roll call. Senator Ada?
Yes.
Senator V. A. Ada?
Yes.
Senator Ogden?
Aye.
Senator Blas?
Yes.
Senator Cavill?
Aye.
Senator Cruz?
Aye.
Senator Espaldon?
Yes.
Senator Guthardts?
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes?
Aye.
Senator Palacios?
Aye.
Senator Panglinen?
Aye.
Senator Esposito?
Aye.
Senator Titegri?
Yes.
Senator Tenorio?
Aye.
Speaker Wampat?
Bill Number 338-30 received 15 yeas. Bill Number 338 is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 271-30.
Bill Number 271-30 LS as amended on the floor. Introduced by Adolfo V. Palacios Cedar, Judithy Guthardts, DPA. An act to repeal section 77108, Chapter 77, Title 10, Guam Code Annotated, Authority to Hire Attorney, and to repeal section 3104, Chapter 3, Title 5, Guam Code Annotated, relative to establishing provisions for the Attorney General to provide legal services to the Guam Police Department and relative to the positions of fire chief, the chief of police, and for other purposes.
Roll call. Senator Ada?
Yes.
Senator V. A. Ada?
Yes.
Senator Ogden?
Aye.
Senator Blas?
Yes.
Senator Cavill? Senator Cruz?
Aye.
Senator Espaldon?
Yes.
Senator Guthardts?
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes?
Aye.
Senator Palacios?
Aye.
Senator Panglinen? Senator Esposito?
Aye.
Senator Titegri? Senator Tenorio?
Aye.
Speaker Wampat?
Bill Number 271-30 received 15 yeas votes. Bill Number 271 is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 346-30.
Bill Number 346-30 LS is substituted by the Committee on Economic Development, Health and Human Services of Judiciary, and amended on the floor. Introduced by Adolfo V. Palacios Senior, F. B. Ogden Jr., Calo Titegri. An act to amend sections 8107 and 8108 of Chapter 8 Title 7 Guam Code Annotated, and section 6403 of Article 4, Chapter 7, Title 17, Guam Code Annotated, relative to including school attendance officers under the provisions of special deputy appointments.
Roll call. Senator Ada?
Yes.
Senator V. A. Ada?
Yes.
Senator Ogden?
Aye.
Senator Blas?
Yes.
Senator Cavill?
Aye.
Senator Cruz?
Aye.
Senator Espaldon?
Yes.
Senator Guthardts?
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes?
Aye.
Senator Palacios?
Aye.
Senator Panglinen?
Aye.
Senator Esposito?
Aye.
Senator Titegri?
Yes.
Senator Tenorio?
Aye.
Speaker Wampat?
Substitute Bill Number 346-30 received 15 yeas votes. Substitute Bill Number 346 is duly passed by this body.
Bill Number 352-30 LS as amended on the floor. Introduced by V. A. Ada, F. F. Blas Jr., Calo Titegri. An act to renumber sections 20119 and 20120, and to add new sections 20119 and 20120 to Chapter 20 of Title 19 Guam Code Annotated relative to prohibiting discrimination for government of Guam program solely on the basis of conviction of the status of offense.
Roll call. Senator Ada?
Yes.
Senator V. A. Ada?
Yes.
Senator Ogden? Senator Blas?
Yes.
Senator Cavill?
Aye.
Senator Cruz?
Aye.
Senator Espaldon?
Yes.
Senator Guthardts?
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes?
Aye.
Senator Palacios?
Aye.
Senator Panglinen?
Aye.
Senator Esposito?
Aye.
Senator Titegri?
Oh, yes.
Senator Tenorio?
Aye.
Speaker Wampat?
Wait for the results. You're celebrating before you hear the results. Bill Number 352-30 LS received 15 yeas votes. Bill Number 352 is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 356-30.
Bill Number 356-30 COR as amended on the floor. Introduced by B. J. F. Cruz. An act to amend section 3444 in Article 4, Chapter 3, Title 11 of the Guam Code Annotated relative to reducing the hours of sale of alcoholic beverages.
We're in 356.
Oh.
Bill 356. Okay, so until we get to that, then. Okay, so Bill Number 356-30, roll call.
Senator Ada?
Yes.
Senator V. A. Ada?
No.
Senator Ogden?
Aye.
Senator Blas?
No.
Senator Cavill?
No.
Senator Cruz?
Aye.
Senator Espaldon?
Aye.
Senator Guthardts?
No.
Senator Munia Barnes?
Aye.
Senator Palacios?
Aye.
Senator Panglinen?
Aye.
Senator Esposito?
No.
Senator Titegri?
No.
Senator Tenorio? Speaker Wampat? Senator Munia Barnes?
Madam Speaker, if I may just note for the record, just realizing what the bill is all about, I'd either like to note for the record that I have an immediate family member who, who I may have a potential conflict of interest in this, but my brother, my nephew own an establishment, so...
Should the body excuse Senator Munia Barnes? Any objections? No objections?
I was just asking. Where's my coffee? I'm asking. I just wanted to make sure.
Okay. So we'll need to make sure you submit a letter then to the clerks on the potential conflict.
But, Madam Speaker, I will vote on the bill then, and it'll be a pass.
Yes, okay. So no dissent.
Madam Speaker, as a matter of record as well, I have an immediate family member who is also involved in the industry and would be financially impacted as a consequence to this, this act, and I therefore will submit a memo to the effect, but I ask to be recused from voting because it will have a detrimental impact on my family member.
Should the body excuse Senator Tenorio from voting? There is an objection, so I'm going to call for the vote. Going to call for the vote, since there is an objection. Those then in, in favor of excusing Senator Tenorio, please raise your hand. It failed, so therefore, Tenorio, you have to vote. Sergeant at Arms, can you please ask the audience in the other room to please keep their... Senator Esposito, before I get the vote, I recognize you.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Before you announce the vote on the bill, I just want to, I know we're all struggling with what constitutes a conflict of interest. In a prior legislature, in a prior process that we underwent through the Guam Ethics, the Guam Legislature's Ethics Committee, we had that ethics lawyer rule that if it's legislation that's going to impact everyone, then it doesn't prevent any one member of the legislature from participating or even voting for that piece of legislation. If you recall, the specific case was a former Senator Rector, where he was charged with being involved in legislation that purported to help members who are the Guam Federation of Teachers who are employed at the Port Authority of Guam. The committee, the Ethics Committee ruled that because that legislation also assisted or would have impacted non-union members, that that was not a conflict of interest. But in the interest of full disclosure, my in-laws do have an ABC license, and to somewhat extent, they're operating a small type of bars, but I still believe that that would not have prevented me from voting on this bill. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
So before I announce then the, the results, this is your last chance, if anybody wants to change their vote. Bill Number 356-30 received eight yeas, seven nays. Bill Number 356-30 is duly passed by this body.
Bill Number 357-30 COR as amended on the floor. Introduced by B. J. F. Cruz. An act to amend section 3630 in Article 6, Chapter 3, Title 11, Guam Code Annotated, relative to the penalty imposed for violations of the hours of sale provision of the alcoholic beverage control law.
Senator Panglinen, you have a question?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, on line 13, in the engrossment, they missed a couple of words. On line 13, in which it should supposed to read after line 12, impose a penalty of up to, up to 10,000, but no, John, that no lesses? But not less than 5,000. So after the word "of" on line 13, insert the word "up to," and on the same line, the
So they've made the correction.
Yes.
So, roll call. Senator Ada? Senator V. A. Ada?
Yes.
Senator Ogden?
Aye.
Senator Blas?
Yes.
Senator Cavill?
Aye.
Senator Cruz?
Aye.
Senator Espaldon?
Yes.
Senator Guthardts?
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes?
Aye.
Senator Palacios?
Aye.
Senator Panglinen?
Aye.
Senator Esposito?
Aye.
Senator Titegri?
Yes.
Senator Tenorio?
Yes.
Speaker Wampat?
Yes.
Yes.
Bill number three fifty-seven dash thirty received fifteen yes. Bill number three fifty-seven is duly passed by this body. Bill number three seventy-four dash thirty.
Bill number three seventy-four dash thirty C O R, as amended on the floor. Introduced by F F Blas Junior, V A Ada. An Act to amend, Section four zero one one zero A and B of Chapter forty, Title five of the Guam Code annotated, relative to the filling of vacancies for mayors and vice-mayors.
Roll call. Senator Ada.
Yes.
Senator V A Ada.
Yes.
Senator Agun.
Aye.
Senator Blas. Senator Cabo.
Aye.
Senator Cruz.
Aye.
Senator Espaldon.
Yes.
Senator Guthardts.
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes.
Aye.
Senator Palacios. Senator Pangolinan. Senator Respechio. Senator Titegri.
Yes.
Senator Tenorio. Speaker Wampat.
Yes.
Madam Speaker, I'm sorry. I would like to change my vote, too.
Okay. Duly noted by the clerks. Bill number three seventy-four dash thirty received fourteen yea votes and one nay. Bill number three seventy-four is duly passed by this body. Bill number three seventy-eight dash thirty.
Bill number three seventy-eight dash thirty L S, as amended on the floor. Introduced by Frank B Agun Junior. An Act to amend, subsection A of section forty-three zero-one, Article three, Chapter four, Title four, Guam Code annotated, relative to recognizing the tremendous benefit and importance of preventive health care activities and programs in promoting healthier lives through requiring that the acquisition of health or medical insurance through the government of Guam include the provision of preventive health care, wellness, and fitness.
Roll call. Senator Ada.
Yes.
Senator V A Ada.
Yes.
Senator Agun.
Aye.
Senator Blas.
Yes.
Senator Cabo.
Yes, Senator.
Yeah. Madam Speaker, and I'm, I would like to make known to the members of the body that in pursuant to Bill number three seventy-eight thirty, there may or may not be a direct, a direct conflict of interest, in particular to, to the issue on health care and wellness programs. I do have very close, close family relatives that are involved in both the operations, management, and the board.
I ask that the senators who are requesting, at this point, the potential conflict, that you do submit then your letter, to file it with the clerks, and then, at the same time, you're making your declaration, and then lastly now, asking the body whether Senator Cabo should be recused. There being no objection?
Yes, ma'am.
You object, so...
Okay.
There is an objection, I'm going to ask the members then, to please, then, those in favor of excusing Senator Cabo, please raise your hand. There's eight, so Senator Cabo, you are excused. And proceed with the roll call. Senator Cruz.
Aye.
Senator Espaldon.
Yes.
Senator Guthardts.
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes.
Aye.
Senator Palacios.
Aye.
Senator Pangolinan. Senator Respechio. Senator Titegri.
Yes.
Senator Tenorio. Speaker Wampat.
Yes.
Bill number three seventy-eight dash thirty received fourteen yes, one excused. Bill number three seventy-eight is duly passed by this body. Bill number three seventy-nine.
Bill number three seventy-nine dash thirty L S, a substitute with the Committee on Public Safety, Law Enforcement, and Senior Citizens, and amended on the floor. Introduced by Thelou Titegri, V A Ada, E J B Cabo, Ray Tenorio, F F Blas Junior, F B Agun Junior. An Act to add a new section thirty-one, thirty-two to Article one, Chapter three, Title five, Guam Code annotated, relative to creating better public service for the manamko and individual, individuals with mobility disabilities.
Roll call. Senator Ada.
Yes.
Senator V A Ada.
Yes.
Senator Agun.
Aye.
Senator Blas.
Yes.
Senator Cabo.
Aye.
Senator Cruz.
Can I be recused? I'm going to be a beneficiary.
Should the body excuse the Vice Speaker from voting?
No.
No.
Vice Speaker, you have to vote. Senator Espaldon.
Yes.
Senator Guthardts.
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Palacios.
Aye.
Senator Pangolinan.
Madam Speaker, I do want to announce that I will be fifty-five this year. I, I was the one who made the amendment to be fifty-five from seventy, and therefore, I may, you know, spend a little less time waiting in line, which means I'll be saving money, so I may have a direct financial benefit from this bill.
But you're not going to be excused?
No, I'm going to vote yes.
Senator Respechio. Senator Titegri.
Yes.
Senator Tenorio. Speaker Wampat.
Yes.
Substitute Bill number three seventy-nine dash thirty received fifteen yes. Substitute Bill number three seventy-nine is duly passed by this body. Bill number three eighty-nine dash thirty.
Bill number three eighty-nine dash thirty C O R, as amended on the floor. Introduced by B J F Cruz. An Act to amend, Section thirty-three zero-three of Article three, Sections thirty-four nineteen and thirty-four twenty of Article four, and Section thirty-six nineteen of Article six, all of Chapter three of Title eleven, Guam Code annotated, and amend Section eighteen one zero-two and eighteen one twenty-one of Article one, Chapter eighteen of Title sixteen, Guam Code annotated, relative to increasing the minimum legal drinking age, and to be known as the Ramon Someros of Urano Act.
Roll call. Senator Ada.
Yes.
Senator V A Ada.
Yes.
Senator Agun.
Aye.
Senator Blas.
Yes.
Senator Cabo.
Aye.
Senator Cruz.
Aye.
Senator Espaldon.
Yes.
Senator Guthardts.
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes.
Aye.
Senator Palacios.
Aye.
Senator Pangolinan.
Aye.
Senator Respechio.
Aye.
Senator Titegri.
Yes.
Senator Tenorio. Speaker Wampat.
Yes.
Bill number three eighty-nine dash thirty received fifteen yea votes. Bill number three eighty-nine dash thirty is duly passed by this body, and congratulations to all of our youths. Bill number three ninety dash thirty.
Bill number three ninety dash thirty C O R, as amended on the floor. Introduced by Thia Munia Barnes, Judith Thiwampad E D D. An Act to amend, subsection D of section thirty-eight, chapter six of Public Law twenty-nine dash one thirteen, relative to the Lada Estates Project and Insurance Access to Affordable Housing for the People of Guam.
Roll call. Senator Ada.
Yes.
Senator V A Ada.
Yes.
Senator Agun.
Aye.
Senator Blas.
Yes.
Senator Cabo.
Aye.
Senator Cruz.
Aye.
Senator Espaldon.
Yes.
Senator Guthardts.
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes.
Aye.
Senator Palacios.
Aye.
Senator Pangolinan.
Aye.
Senator Respechio.
Yes.
Senator Titegri.
Yes.
Senator Tenorio. Speaker Wampat.
Yes.
Bill number three ninety dash thirty received fifteen yes. Bill number three ninety is duly passed by this body. Bill number three ninety-one dash thirty.
Bill number three ninety-one dash thirty C O R, as amended on the floor. Introduced by B C Pangolinan, Judith Thiwampad E D D, F B Agun Junior. An Act to amend, Sections sixty-one, sixty-one nine, and sixty-one, sixty-three three, of Article six, Chapter sixty-one, Title twenty-one, Guam Code annotated, relative to hearing date notice.
Roll call. Senator Ada.
Yes.
Senator V A Ada.
Yes.
Senator Agun.
Yes.
Senator Blas. Senator Cabo.
Aye.
Senator Cruz.
Aye.
Senator Espaldon.
Yes.
Senator Guthardts.
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes.
Aye.
Senator Palacios.
Aye.
Senator Pangolinan. Senator Respechio. Senator Titegri.
Yes.
Senator Tenorio. Speaker Wampat.
Yes.
Bill number three ninety-one dash thirty received fifteen yea votes. Bill number three ninety-one dash thirty is duly passed by this body. Bill number four zero five.
Bill number four zero five dash thirty C O R, a substitute with the Committee on Economic Development, Health, and Human Services and Judiciary, and amended on the floor. Introduced by B C Pangolinan, F B Agun Junior. An Act to amend, Section fifty-two seventy of Article four, Chapter five, Title five, Guam Code annotated, relative to including the Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse and the Government Group Purchase of Drugs from Manufacturers.
Roll call. Senator Ada.
Yes.
Senator V A Ada.
Yes.
Senator Agun.
Aye.
Senator Blas.
Yes.
Senator Cabo.
Aye.
Senator Cruz.
Aye.
Senator Espaldon.
Yes.
Senator Guthardts.
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Palacios.
Aye.
Senator Pangolinan. Senator Respechio. Senator Titegri.
Yes.
Senator Tenorio. Speaker Wampat.
Yes.
Bill number four zero five dash thirty received fifteen yea votes. Bill number four zero five is duly passed by this body. Bill number four zero six dash thirty.
Bill number four zero six dash thirty C O R, a substitute with the Committee on Economic Development, Health, and Human Services and Judiciary, and amended. Introduced by T C Ada. An Act to repeal, Section sixty-four point fifty of Article two, Chapter sixty-four, Title nine, Guam Code annotated, and to repeal and reenact, Chapter five of Title eleven, Guam Code annotated, relative to restricting Greyhound racing.
Roll call. Senator Ada.
Yes.
Senator V A Ada.
Yes.
Senator Agun. Senator Blas. Senator Cabo.
Aye.
Senator Cruz.
Aye.
Senator Espaldon.
Yes.
Senator Guthardts.
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes.
Aye.
Senator Palacios. Senator Pangolinan.
Aye.
Senator Respechio.
Yes.
Senator Titegri.
Yes.
Senator Tenorio. Speaker Wampat.
Yes.
Bill number four zero six dash thirty received fifteen yea votes. Bill number four zero three, I mean six, is duly passed by this body, four zero six. Bill number four twelve dash thirty.
Bill number four twelve dash thirty C O R, a substitute with the Committee on Education. Introduced by Judith Thiwampad E D D, Thia Munia Barnes. An Act to amend, Chapter twelve, Title seventeen, of the Guam Code annotated, relative to the Guam Academy Charter Schools.
Roll call. Senator Ada.
Yes.
Senator V A Ada.
Yes.
Senator Agun.
Aye.
Senator Blas.
Yes.
Senator Cabo.
Aye.
Senator Cruz.
Aye.
Senator Espaldon.
Yes.
Senator Guthardts.
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes.
Aye.
Senator Palacios. Senator Pangolinan.
Aye.
Senator Respechio.
Yes.
Senator Titegri.
Yes.
Senator Tenorio. Speaker Wampat.
Yes.
Bill number four twelve dash thirty received fifteen yea votes. Bill number four twelve dash thirty is duly passed by this body. Bill number three thirty-seven dash thirty.
Bill number three thirty-seven dash thirty C O R, as amended on the floor. Introduced by F B Agun Junior. An Act to amend, Section twenty-six, six zero three D of Article six, Chapter twenty-six, Title... An act amend Section 26603D of Article 6, Chapter 26, Title 11, Guam Code Annotated, relative to providing the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority with a secured funding source for the purpose of reducing outstanding debt service payments, thereby providing financial relief and GMHS borrowing ability and support in its operations.
Roll call. Senator Ada?
Yes.
Senator V.A. Ada?
Yes.
Senator Ogun?
I'm sorry, Madam Speaker, just a point of information. I believe that on the floor, when this particular legislation was being discussed, there was a motion for Speaker Ben Panglinen to be a second sponsor. I just don't want us to proceed with the voting without recognizing that. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Duly noted.
Yes.
Senator Calvo?
Aye.
Senator Cruz? Gentlemen, we are voting.
Aye.
Senator Espaldon?
Yes.
Senator Guthardts?
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes?
Oui.
Senator Palacios?
Oui.
Senator Panglinen?
Oui.
Senator Respechio?
Yes.
Senator Titerwi?
Yes.
Senator Tenorio?
Yes.
Speaker Wampa?
Yes. Bill number 337-30 received 15 ye votes. Bill number 337-30 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 396-30.
Bill number 396-30 COR is amended on the floor. Introduced by F.F. Blas Jr., Adolfo B. Palacios Sr. An act to prohibit the possession of HU210, JW8018, and JW8073 chemicals found in the product commonly known as spice, and salvia divinorum or salvinorum A.
Roll call. Senator Ada?
Yes.
Senator V.A. Ada?
Yes.
Senator Ogun?
Yes.
Senator Blas?
Yes.
Senator Calvo? Gentlemen, we can't hear the votes. Senator Espaldon?
Yes.
Senator Guthardts?
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes?
Oui.
Senator Palacios?
Oui.
Senator Panglinen?
Yes.
Senator Respechio?
Yes.
Senator Titerwi?
Yes.
Yes.
Speaker Wampa?
Yes. Bill number 396-30 received 15 ye votes. Bill number 396 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 433-30.
Bill number 433-30 outlast has amended on the floor. Introduced by T.C. Ada. An act amend Sections 9 and 11 of Public Law 30-25, relative to the implementation date of the 2009 International Building Code, IBC09, and the adoption of the referenced codes.
Roll call. Senator Ada?
Yes.
Senator V.A. Ada?
Yes.
Senator Ogun?
Yes.
Senator Blas?
Yes.
Senator Calvo?
Aye.
Senator Cruz?
Senator Cruz.
Senator Cruz?
Aye.
Senator Espaldon?
Yes.
Senator Guthardts?
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes?
Oui.
Senator Palacios?
Oui.
Senator Panglinen?
Aye.
Senator Respechio?
Yes.
Senator Titerwi?
Yes.
Senator Tenorio?
Yes.
Speaker Wampa?
Yes. Bill number 433-30 received 14 ye votes, one nay. Bill number 433 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 362-30.
Bill number 362-30 COR is amended on the floor. Introduced by Thierry Munia Barnes, J.T. Wampa E. D.D., F.F. Blas Jr., T.C. Ada. An act to add a new Section 849.6 to Article 1, Chapter 8 of Title 1, Guam Code Annotated, relative to renaming the Soft Dow Dedded Buffer Strip located within Lot Number 16A as the Dedded Veterans Memorial Park.
Roll call. Senator Ada?
Yes.
Senator V.A. Ada?
Yes.
Senator Ogun?
Yes.
Senator Blas?
Yes.
Senator Calvo?
Aye.
Senator Cruz?
Aye.
Senator Espaldon?
Yes.
Senator Guthardts?
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes?
Oui.
Senator Palacios?
Yes.
Senator Panglinen?
Oui.
Senator Respechio?
Yes.
Senator Titerwi?
Yes.
Senator Tenorio?
Yes.
Speaker Wampa?
Yes.
Senator Espaldon?
Bill number 362-30 received 15 ye votes. Bill number 362-30 is duly passed by this body. On the matter of vetoed Bill number, what's the number two, 304, notwithstanding the objections of Maga Laing Guahan, I'm going to ask the clerk to read then. Should the body then override the governor's veto?
Vetoed Bill number 304-30 COR is substituted with the Committee on Appropriations, Taxation, Banking, Insurance, Retirement, and Land, and further substituted it on the floor. Introduced by Adolfo B. Palacios Sr., T.C. Ada, V. Antony Ada, and others. An act to add a new subsection G to Section 55102, Chapter 55, Division 3, Title 10, the Guam Code Annotated, and amend Section 5.55G of Article 2, Chapter 5, Title 18, Guam Code Annotated, relative to including the Criminal Investigation Supervisor, Tax Investigators, Assistant Tax Investigators, Compliance Inspection Supervisor, and Compliance Inspectors of the Department of Revenue and Taxation, and the Enthomologists and the Commodity Inspectors of the Department of Agriculture, and the Compensation of Public Safety and Law Enforcement Officers.
Roll call. Senator Ada?
Yes.
Senator V.A. Ada?
Yes.
Senator Ogun?
Yes.
Senator Blas?
Yes.
Senator Calvo?
Aye.
Senator Cruz?
Aye.
Senator Espaldon?
Yes.
Senator Guthardts?
Senator Munia Barnes? Oui.
Senator Palacios?
Oui.
Senator Panglinen?
Aye.
Senator Respechio?
Yes.
Senator Titerwi?
Aye.
Senator Tenorio?
Yes.
Speaker Wampa?
No.
Senator Titerwi?
Aye.
Senator Tenorio?
Yes.
votes are 10 yays, 5 nays. Bill number 304 is overwritten by Yiminat Chantana Lehaslatron Guahan.
Okay, Senator Respechio, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, notwithstanding the House rules, I move that we revert back to motions for the Vice Speaker to make a motion.
On that motion, without any objections, and so order. Senator, Vice Speaker, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. First, I'd like to thank my colleagues for not objecting to the motion to come back. I know it's been a long and very tense day. I want to thank everybody. But we do have a situation currently, and I've provided you all with the letter from the Attorney General. I've asked the Speaker to declare an emergency as it relates to Bill 434.
430?
434.
434, okay, oh yes, okay.
As it relates to the powers of the Attorney General's office. As you may recall, we passed a bill earlier this year to have the Attorney General oversee all procurement, and we've been advised by the Attorney General that currently they have 31 contracts that they're considering for procurement. 26 of them are autonomous agencies and 6 of the governments. I understand that they had spoken to you, Madam Speaker, and they told you that they've done a survey and there are about 100 procurements out there with the ERA funds. The Attorney General's asked us one of two things, either we provide them with more money, or they gave us two options of legislation. And you'll notice in the letter that they sent us, they had two suggested pieces of legislation. One was either to give the Attorney General the authority to designate attorneys within the autonomous agencies to serve as special attorney generals for the purpose of fulfilling the responsibility currently under the public law, or the second option is to just exempt the autonomous agencies from the impact of the public law. I know that the Chairman of Autonomous Agencies would prefer that we take the second option. I'm really not married to either one of the two. I did propose in 434 the first option of having the Attorney General retain power by designating attorneys, but I would have no objection if it's the consensus of the body that they'd much rather that it be exempt the autonomous agencies completely and let them handle their own procurement. I just think we need to assist the Attorney General. He was one of two people handling contracts, and now he's Attorney General and can no longer devote 100% of his time to that issue. So we have either three choices, either give them more money to hire more attorneys, exempt the attorneys, I mean exempt the autonomous agencies, or keep the power within the Attorney General's office, but allow him to designate special attorney generals to oversee the procurement and have that fulfill the intent of the law. I leave it to the body, and I know that everybody wants to get out, but we've got to get some of these because many of these are ERA, time-sensitive issues that need to be resolved. So if we could just take a few minutes to read the letter, decide if we want option one or option two, because I don't think anybody wants to do any appropriating to give additional two attorneys right now, and I'm not sure, even if we gave them the money, they'd be able to find attorneys to hire at the Attorney General's office to do this. So either one of these two options would be the better, I mean are the only two options we have to alleviate a backlog in the Attorney General's office, and I ask for all the members to please do one of two things. I don't know.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Speaker.
I ask for...
Yes, and...
I'm sorry, I didn't even move it to the second reading file. No, I haven't even gotten the authority to waive the emergency.
You're right. I was just about to do it, so, I mean, gee, okay. But you're right, Vice Speaker, I did meet with the Attorney General, and after careful evaluation for that request and to waive the requirements of public hearing on Bill number 434, that I will certify that 434 then meets that condition, and I am waiving then the public hearing. So that's my declaration, so now your motion...
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Then I move Bill 434 to third reading file, I mean second reading file, and ask for an opportunity to speak. Unfortunately, I already spoke.
Well, could we just go and take a minute recess?
Yeah, take a few minute recess at this point, now they went out in second reading.
What have you all decided you're going to do?
We're going to vote now. Let's go. We cannot vote here. We can't keep it here.
Okay, let's go. Can we do an engross, not engrossment?
Wait, we've got to finish this one. Senator B.J. Cruz, Vice Speaker.
Would it be, I move that we vote on Bill 434 without engrossment. There was no amendment to it.
On that motion then, without any objections, so ordered. Senator Titegwe?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I ask that we just take just another five minutes with regards to introducing another bill that basically marries the bill that is being proffered for the emergency purpose of ERA funding. And if you just give me five minutes, they are already bringing this over. It's had its public hearing already, and it has been substituted, and we're just trying to locate it right now to introduce it. Not introduce it, but ask that it has consideration, considering the fact of the ERA funding emergency. Okay. Thank you.
Madam Speaker?
What have you all decided you're going to do?
We're going to vote now.
Can we do an engrossment or not engrossment?
Wait, we've got to finish this one. Senator B.J. Cruz, Vice Speaker.
Would it be, I move that we bill, vote on Bill 434 without engrossment. There was no amendment to it.